We have a call, we'll call the support chapter. All right, Donna?
Mayor and Council, we want to talk with you tonight about the I-35 aesthetics package for 407 and the Garden Ridge interchanges. You've seen most of this, but we do want to talk specifically about color selection and what's driving that and some potential additions that we haven't discussed in the past. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ferris and his team.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I did want to introduce a few folks here with us tonight. Mr. Glenn Walsh with AGL, he is the basically project manager.
Design, build, project manager.
There you go, sir. For the quarter. Chris Allen. And CJ Sheck Snyder.
Sheck Snyder.
There you go. With AGL as well, so they're here for any questions you may have. What we want to do is relive four things tonight. We want to go through a short overview of the quarter, kind of touch base where we've been. We want to look at 407 specifically, the artwork and the colors. We have some pretty cool drawings we're going to show you on 407. Garden Ridge, same thing. We're going to show you the artwork and show you some dollars and some options that have come up recently and we think that we ought to get your input on. And then we're going to visit with Fox Avenue, looking at the landscaping. We're also going to visit the covered structure that the mayor had referred to here a short while ago. So with that, we're going to dive in. We're going to be using a myriad of our new technology, thanks to our ITs to form. This is a great screen. You'll be seeing this a lot. It's been a big benefit in our Blue Ribbon Bond presentations. We'll use our big screen. We're going to use some color boards. So it'll be several of us speaking. It's informal, so ask questions if you so choose, and hopefully we'll get through this. I-35, again, is something that you've all seen that is not really new. We started looking at this years ago. Come right in, Mayor. Nico, why don't you pick up from here and I'll be working boards in a second.
Okay, so we wanted to recap because we started on the I-35 redevelopment plan and I-35 identity plan that came in the full of the I-35 redevelopment plan in 2011. So the council actually adopted the I-35 identity plan, which is the identities along the corridor for all of our bridges and underpasses in 2012. So we have a packet that we had available for TechStop to look at, to see what we wanted in Lewisville as an identity. However, going back to 2007, TechStop and HNTV actually started working on an identity for the entire corridor. Because if you remember, this corridor is actually, the project is going to be from 6:35 to 3:80. So they wanted to create a very consistent theme along the corridor completely for the entire segment. However, they were looking at allowing some of the jurisdictions, some of the local governments, to have their own identity within the city, which is that's when the council decided in 2011 that we wanted to create those special identities for Lewisville. Primarily, you know, the enhancement, it needs to be pretty much unified along the corridor and what they've decided with TechStop, that the theme that they chose in terms of colors throughout the corridor would be the same color. So we were pretty much locked in with the color theme within the corridor, which is primarily is a commercial zone, which is that brick color, that reddish maroon color. Then there's an old town zone or what they call it, the hometown, which is pretty much the same in most of the cities, and it's going to be a little more muted colors of old town. And then they have the lake character. When we went through our process, so basically, this is what TechStop and HNTV came up and gave that direction to all of the cities along the corridor, that this is primarily what you need to go from when you're developing your guidelines. If we hadn't done any of the enhancements that the council had approved throughout identity plan for Lewisville, this is what you would get. This is primarily the commercial corridor, the colors that you see, and primarily textured concrete and some colors along the corridor would be the, and some of the cities are electing to basically do that and not go as much as we have done in terms of improving the corridor.
Typical prototype here, you can see where this has the reddish brick color and this is the cutaway. You're going to see this in a minute where we put our artwork in flareback. But this is the colored banding that some cities might choose to do. But these are prototype bridges that, again, we had looked at years ago and that you all had decided, no, we want to do something above and beyond this. Now, there's an example, looks nice, but y'all have basically said we want to look at something a little bit more special for Lewisville. So this is the standard package, if you will, of the quarter. This would be the lake blue and, again, we'll show the corridor elements here. Again, TechStop had two zones, lake and urban. We split that into three, which we could do. But this would have been the lake blue, and again, going back, this is the basic color palette, the brick red in the urban zone, the slate gray in the lake zone, and the warm gray to complement. Again, these were our three zones that we came up with. The city did lakes, old town, and parks, that, again, we did and approved.
If you remember, when we did this, that's before TechStop came in with a phase one and phase two. At the time when we were working on this, we thought the entire corridor is going to be improved. So we had improvements for every bridge and underpass along the corridor. Now with the current phase one, there are two bridges, which is both going to be in the lake zone, that are going to be improved. Basically, 407 and Garden Ridge are going to be constructed to the ultimate condition. So that is going to be the ultimate, the bridge and overpass or underpass, that's when the new phases are completed, nothing is going to happen to those bridges or underpasses. They're going to be in exact location. And so everything that we're putting into those underpasses and bridges will be preserved for the second phase that's coming in. And it will also create an image for the, you know, so everybody will know in the future what will the rest of the corridor look like.
Okay, so you've seen the artwork before, you've seen the mock-up or the little drawings in your handouts and the identity plan and whatnot. We thought it'd be better that we hire Cory, put some dollars in to get some renderings of what it's more truly going to look like with printer color, paint color, everything be more accurate, because you can have 10 shades of blue, but what we've tried to do
-- We did have 10 shades of blue.
-- is get you something to look at on 407. Again, this is a million and a half. Just go ahead and Dave and try to present this out.
So while they're doing that, with 407, because we knew that's going to be an underpass, again, highway is going to be over 407. We knew that's going to be the ultimate condition. The council wanted to have all the enhancements inside, in that project, the 407 grid. So we actually developed all the construction plans that got inserted into the TechStop bid documents. So we knew exactly what was going to be built. So 407 is very well developed. They know exactly what we're going to do on 407, so, and that, and we knew the cost of it. We had estimated the cost. And this is the Lepapha that you had approved with TechStop for that one and a half million dollars in improvements.
There was technical difficulties here.
Shouldn't have had a driver.
I did, I figured. And then the instructions here. I'll hold it if you want. Or you can explain it, or do one side at a time maybe.
Okay, well.
Yeah, you're welcome.
This is just a simplified drawing. It indicates FM 407, the whole four murals are going to be organized and located at the intersection. You know, we've got north pointing actually in the west direction here. So this is your northbound frontage road, southbound frontage road, and FM 407 crossing underneath I-35. On the northbound frontage road, on the south side of FM 407, you're going to have this duck mural. And so, you know, as you're driving northbound on the service road and you look off to your left, that's what you're going to see. And that's a representation of the colors, the warm gray, the slate blue, there's cream and beige in there. And then as you cross 407 and go north, there's a different mural. It's one with herons. Now, we apologize, we didn't get a good drawing or a good rendering of the herons, but that sort of shows you what the herons are going to look like.
So the birds you'd seen before, they're actually in a gold color in your small handouts that you all have. But these were, this is the artwork and the paint colors, but these are the herons that will be on the northbound side.
So they're going to be in that color palette though?
Yeah. In the blue and --
In the blue and gray. So that color palette, again, is present throughout the corridor, and there's very little deviation from it. So we really cannot deviate much. We can change the shades a little bit here and there, but primarily, that's the color palette along the entire corridor.
So that's this one.
Okay.
So now on the next one.
Okay. Southbound service road, as you're approaching 407, again, looking to your left as you're driving south, you'll have the mural F, which is a --
I've discovered this one, yes.
Yeah, actually, it's this mural right here with the bass and the fishing lure. And again, it'd be the same sort of a color scheme. And then after you cross 407 and you're continuing southbound, you'll have the catfish mural. Which is this mural here.
A question we asked was if we wanted to keep it just the shades of gray that you've always seen in your booklet, could we do that? And the answer to that is no. Shades of gray are set for that part of the quarter.
So if it didn't have anything on it, they would just basically paint it solid blue? With these colors, pretty much, I find. I want to go back to this, just, so in addition --
Before you leave that, to help all set some of that cost, could we not see about doing some branding and put maybe bass pro on the fish and put Duck Dynasty duck blind on the duck?
Now, I think it's a good, as a segue to that, let's let Glenn, would you define telling the council, since we've started several years ago, what other cities are kind of doing right now with art, with color, from maybe Denton and Carroll? Give an overview.
We've got meetings and coordination going on with all the cities throughout the corridor, from Farmers Branch all the way to Denton. Some folks aren't doing anything, some are getting pretty elaborate. Everybody's doing something a little bit different, but they're really kind of trying to enhance the corridor with money that they can find to add some aesthetic upgrades that really comply with the aesthetic guidelines that TechStop provided us as part of the contract. There was nothing really as sort of defined and tight as FM 407 throughout the whole corridor. So we're learning a little bit as we go, but for instance, the Denton and UNT are teamed up to put logos on their walls as you go under North Texas Boulevard. There's some monuments opportunities, there's lighting upgrades. As we move down into Corinth, they've looked at some pavement upgrades at the intersections and they're talking about upgrading their railing for the bridges that they maintain and take care of that go up and over 35. City Hickory Creek, or the town of Hickory Creek is looking at some changes to the patterns to upgrade them a little bit from the basic three, which would be in the lakes corridor, the sailboat, the tree, or the heron. So they're looking at more of a hickory tree that kind of represents their town. They feel a little bit better than just a plain old tree. Monuments, then we get into Lewisville with the upgrades that you all are proposing. And then the city of Carrollton is looking at bridge railing upgrades and then some other things like mostly parking lot lighting. So everybody has their own little flavor on it and we're in the final throes of closing all of those things out and getting pricing back and getting Lepaphas put together and advancing our design and completing that. So it's a little dynamic process and sometimes I lose track of who's doing what in what corridor, because we've got to keep track of everything. But we're almost done and we really appreciate the city working with us and responding to our needs and our schedule as we move through this to get some decisions.
Am I understanding correctly, though, from, it went from Farmers Branch up to Denton, everybody is working within that four color palette?
No, they're different by, the project is divided up into three zones. And so the city of Lewisville actually covers two zones, which is the urban zone and the lakes zone. When you get north of Swisher, that turns into what they call the gateway zone, and that's a different color. And then when you get south of Lewisville, that's called the urban zone. So everybody has the same palettes as in those three zones to work with. And so the city of Denton, for instance, they can't go to anything different than the shade of, they affectionately refer to it as the mustard color. So we're working with them on some shade adjustments. But as long as they stay within those, it's kind of like a homeowners association, you can have a gray roof and a red roof or whatever you want to do to your, staining your fence, that's really the guidelines we fall within. And then we upgrade those as long as they're consistent and we use TechStop as our homeowners association to make sure there's continuity throughout the corridor and nobody goes rogue.
But these would be, this would be our colors and our zone we have to work with.
We do have some urban locations, which is again, more that color of brick, so it would be in our old town area and in our 121 business of Fox that we'll be looking at. So that's our urban zone that's going to --
Phase two.
Well, some of it, you know, Fox is in phase one, but the other ones in phase two. But primarily, the two big bridges are in our lake zone, which has that blue.
And I think one of the things that we really appreciate the city working with us on is we changed as part of our proposal, the Garden Ridge overpass. You know, in the original plans, we were, the Garden Ridge was going under 35 and we flipped that stack, went through a reeval process as part of an ATC with TechStop to save money on the project, which created a lot of opportunities for the city of Lewisville to mimic what's been done on 407, which is kind of what's brought a lot of this to the forefront.
So some of the other enhancement, of course, is part of our package, is the pavement enhancement that you see, wider sidewalks, the lighting that's enhanced and the columns that are enhanced. So this is all part of our package, basically. Garden Ridge Boulevard, this is going to be the configuration, as Glenn just mentioned. When we were working through this whole thing, this was supposed to be an underpass and it became a bridge. So we actually didn't do the similar type of construction drawings that they've done for 407 for this intersection. Working with AGL, we decided to basically incorporate the same kind of images, because this is both on the lake, same kind of images as we're doing in 407 and bring it up north to Garden Ridge. So again, as you can see, Garden Ridge will have the same type of pavement, the wave design, and then it will have a different --
Is that just the way the picture looks or is it going to be the same design on both, I mean, same width and stuff on both sides of the freeway? Is it just optical illusion, the way the picture looks?
It's the actual width of the roadway?
Yeah, look at the left up there and it looks much narrower than the right inside.
I think that's just --
Just a drawing.
It's a little bit of an optical illusion. What you have here is the managed lanes are on the right-hand side, so that adds a little bit of width to it, so.
No, I'm talking about the bridge itself. I'm talking about Garden Ridge.
Oh, the bridge itself?
See on the left-hand side how it narrowed down and looks real narrow right into there?
Way up there, yeah. It does taper down to feather back into the Garden Ridge U-turns, those button hooks that are on the east side.
That's where the station is, basically? So you are going that --
Yeah, they're creating, they're creating that left turn.
We're talking about the median though, aren't you? Is that what you're talking about?
Is it going to stay, yeah, is it going to stay four lanes all the way down? We're getting ready to punch that through.
Four lanes going west all the way. But on the east side, we still have that jug handle that you have to get --
This is Garden Ridge, not Valley Ridge.
Garden Ridge.
I'm saying, I'm sorry. I was thinking this is Valley Ridge. I'm sorry. I thought it was, I was thinking Valley Ridge.
All right, so let's quickly look at the artwork that's going on. And Dave, can I explain what's going on with these?
Okay. There's, at this particular intersection or interchange, there's three walls that we're looking at. We've got the wall along the northbound lanes. There's a wall that you really can't see in this picture, but it faces the southbound lanes. And then there's also a wall that faces, you know, where the homes are recently torn down and the little area that's going to be a park faces, but it's ultimately going to be a city park right next to I-35 Service Road. So we've got three walls. Two main walls adjacent to the main lanes are going to be identical in either direction for the most part in terms of the murals. You've got, you know, you've got the sailboat mural and then the water ski mural. And that's sort of the order that they're in. If you were traveling northbound in this direction, that's basically what you would see off to your right as you crossed underneath Garden Ridge. And then, of course, after you crossed underneath the ridge, this is what you have on your And it would be just the opposite, coming in the other direction.
Advance it, Nico. Yeah, go back. Go back one, right there. So you can see this is west, is that right, Dave?
Yeah, that's looking west.
So you see the sailboats here? This is the southbound, the little lime green Range Rover there is southbound and you pick up the sailboats going underneath.
And then over here, you'd have the speedboat and the water ski right.
And the railings are not?
The railings, again, would be more, are quarter blue.
Right, that's still --
Quarter blue with the lighting and whatnot. This isn't necessarily meant to have to pick that. So then, we came up with AGL, the question came up, do we have extra wall area? Do you want to try to do something? So we came up together and worked through PB with Cory, and they came up with some additional, and this is what Cory, if we step recommended that we do, up there, we'll put this one up, basically stating that if we wanted to do additional form liners, then you would put the ducks, the birds, the fish and group them like this. And those would be the extensions of, you can see on the screen, the embankment walls, that you could go beyond and do something more. Now, this part is new. It's nothing scientific, it's just form liners. And again, form liners, some go in, some go out, but this is not obviously concrete, but this is similar to what makes the reveals and depictions of what you've seen around the Metroplex. Some of them just go in with reveals, some of the others, more detailed, go in and out more of a profile like this. So it's really just a matter of adding the artwork to those extra walls. We had Cory look at it, we said there's several additions, do you want to do one, two, space amount, whatever. He came back with a pattern like this. That would be a total cost for Garden Ridge at --
2.9. Well, the total cost is about 1.3. This extra work that we just did is 2.89 extra.
What's the upkeep, Sol?
The upkeep is basically paint with sealers, so at some time it'd have to be repainted.
And that is our responsibility.
At what time? Six months? Six years? Six decades? At what time?
You want to answer that?
It's probably, I would look at it in sort of a five-year program to do touch-up and things like that and vandalism maintenance, because, you know, eventually you'll get tagging. I don't know if you get it so much here, but it's, if there's an upgrade to this extent, it's the city's responsibility to maintain it. And I'd say you go back every five years. And all depends on how nice you want to keep it. If I was keeping this and this was mine, I've seen other projects where it's every five years, because this is like a piece of furniture in your house. I mean, this isn't --
Haven't they over there in Grand Prairie, there on 30 and Beltline? That's been there about five years, hasn't it? And it's a water feature type deal. Has it upheld? Have they had problems?
Grand Prairie's got the windmills and stuff. Yeah, they've held up pretty good, it's just --
Right there at 30?
Oh, you're talking about --
At 30 and Beltline Road, where about just south of the racetrack. About there where it goes under, it's on, they have beautiful looking, I even think it has some lighting that at night it shines down on.
It's paint.
You may be able to stretch it to 10 years, but it's just --
I'm just wondering, is it held up pretty good for them and if they have problems with it, with people painting on it and stuff, do you know?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
We're thinking somewhere six to eight years, but, you know, you could be, depending on the sun, some of this won't hit afternoon sun with faves, so we're thinking six to eight years. Of course, if there's a wreck or if there's a car fire or something that damages, that's going to be that, but it'll be some maintenance to it.
Mr. Ferris?
The parts that we'd be maintaining as far as the paint goes, it's going to be the blue and gray sections. The others are just silhouette or is there paint involved with the?
It's all, it's all paint.
Just fewer colors?
Right. Okay. So again, total package, you're basically, again, remember, you're starting at 5 million of the county's money. So if you take up 1.5 off of 407, you're down to 3.5. You take off another 1.35 for Garden Ridge, you're sitting at 2.1 at this point. If you were to do all of this, plus the lighting and railings and everything we've looked at. So let's move on real quickly to Fox and tell you what's going on with Fox. So Fox Bridge, the north side of the bridge will be constructed as not a throwaway. We've talked about this before, but Dave, can you kind of point out what's going on?
South side is going to be, correct? South side is going to be the permanent.
Okay.
Yeah, this is actually a, this is actually a view of the permanent bridge in the phase Phase one, they're not going to build all the lanes. In fact, we've got a picture here coming up that'll show you the alignment. That's generally, again, it's --
Generally the color palette.
Yeah, kind of the color palette with the old town, you know, work pattern, sidewalks and the black lights and railing colors and --
So, so you know?
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, this is actually a representation of what the phase one bridge is going to look like. It's going to have a little bit of an offset to the existing Fox Avenue. It is going to be four lanes undivided in the phase one. And everything that's going to be built with phase one, for the most part, is going to stay with phase two. They'll basically add on to the north side of the bridge when they come back with phase two. And so very little of what they build in, very little of what they build in phase one is actually going to be throwaway. Most of it will stay.
How much of the, on phase one, how much of the existing structure is going away?
All of it.
All of it?
Yeah.
In two phases or two pieces or?
Yes, two phases.
Yeah, this is all brand new and it's, I mean, they're going to build it and for the most part, it's going to stay. They'll just add on to it in phase two.
So we're basically adding what we had in our identity plan, which was very little for Fox. So not all of our intersections are very elaborate, so primarily --
I notice you don't have the little fence there that's on the south side now. Are we going to do away with that?
This doesn't, but we are, again, so we are looking at some fencing options.
Okay. If they're going to keep that kids walk across there.
So the fencing options, the mayor had asked a while back to look at the coverage structures. So what you're looking at is a prototype that can be mortened both ways. This is one option that we could do with actually some tubular steel that comes up and then curves in. Let's go to the next one. Another version that has more of a mesh with tubular steel and it also curves in, you can see it over here. That's in the $300,000 package now, along with landscaping and everything we talked about with lighting and colored railing. Now, if you wanted to look, let's go to the next one, if you wanted to look at what Arlington did, this is about a $600,000 bill, 580 something, correct, Glenn?
Yeah.
This is about a $600,000 bill. This is what the mayor was referring to in Arlington that they built with the project. So --
600 on top of the 300?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that, is that all of those that did that or is that just one street? Because they've got it on, I think, Collins?
They've got it on Center, Collins and one --
Anfield or two, don't they? Yeah. So is that 600 cover all three bridges?
No, it's just, no.
600 per bridge?
And actually, this is for our hours, which is per linear foot. I think this was $52 a linear foot.
Go back to the floor plan.
That's a little much.
So if we did it, what they're recommending would be this footage there in red, it would basically cover all the way across the jug handle, from one jug handle to the other.
Again, it would be a little bit, it'd be a combination, let's go back to the cover. When you'd have to have protection, you'd have to have the fencing, some sort of fencing that we're going to do anyway. Let's just pretend this was the south elevation. You'd have to have the fencing on one side all the way down. So it'd be a combination of this plus that. Now, they didn't have to do that here because it's in the median. They may, I don't think they did it on the other lane over there, actually, you can see it over here. So it'd be a combination now. So it'd be a combination. Now, fortunately, we didn't spend any money to get designed or a mock-up or whatever. So what we're looking for y'all tonight is a consistence. Consistence, if you want to do this, then we'll have to give a quick nod to them to produce some options and shop drawings to come back with a harder cost for you. If you're interested in adding this to Fox, right now, you're sitting at $300,000 on a typical Fox package that doesn't count for an overhead cover. So if you wanted to do that with the $300,000, you're sitting at about 1.8, 1.85 so far. That'd be 5 million. So that would be another anywhere from five, again, these can be elaborate according to what Glenn says, that anywhere from $600,000 up to 2 million. It just depends on how you design and how you want to decorate your covered walkway, if you wanted to do it.
In addition, you're going to have some gateway signs that haven't been designed yet, and that's an extra cost if you want gateway signs on both ends and those, like 121 and also at Garden Ridge. So that's going to be some extra money. That package will be coming back to you very soon.
So the state doesn't feel as though they have any responsibility to put up that fencing along there? I mean, they put up guard rails along 35 with poles and steel rail to make sure people don't grow up, drive across meetings. They don't want to worry, they don't care if kids jump off? Five to 10-year-old kids jump, push each other off that rail?
Well, they do and we do. And we have a fence that goes up there, but it's the basic chain link package.
What's up there now?
Kind of what's up there now. And so what they've asked us is what's the upgrade cost to? We've priced upgrades throughout the corridor, and they pretty consistently come back with, you know, vinyl coat the fence so it looks better, and then go into this picket-style fence in two different styles. One a little bit more elaborate than the other one. So we've priced all those options. And we're still pretty flexible on other options available. We just took a look at sort of the top four. One being the base.
I didn't understand if the state was paying for it yet.
Let's go back to the cover one last time. So mayor, you ask it, so I'm going to be the one who tells it. So, Text Dot did it as a one-shot project in Arlington, but they said that would be the only one time they did it. So I think you asked the question, did the city pay for it? Did the state pay for it? Did private pay for it? From what we've found out verbally, that was funded through Text Dot as a one-time deal. And we've been told, they told us that, said, we will not do it here, so it was a one-time deal. But I wanted to tell you that they didn't tell us that.
I bet they do it in Austin if they were asked to.
It's a good guess.
Do you think they do it in Austin?
Whatever. There's a sports team.
What about Denton, North Texas?
I believe North Texas picked one, I think.
The Pet Bridge?
I'm not familiar with that.
We think North Texas paid for that.
So the two big things that we wanted to get consensus on, kind of wrapping up, was going back to, did you want to do the extra artwork at Garden Ridge? And this is, if you do do it, this is what Cory recommends we do. He's our art design guy with PB. And that addition would be, how much?
1.89.
No, this is subset.
Just 29.
29.
29 for just the, just the, these.
The extras.
The extras. But the sailboats and. Speedboat is included in that 1.3 million dollar package.
These were never planned. These are additional.
The west elevation along the park, if we didn't expand, we wouldn't have anything? This, the third one down?
Yeah, we wouldn't.
Yeah, it would basically be this.
Yeah, so it'd be just the blocks if you did this.
It would just be the blocks without the ducks.
Yeah, without the ducks. And that color, and that warm gray.
That gray.
I'm okay with the additional upgrade and then further down the wall.
So have you, quickly, see that curve? Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going.
There it is, right there.
Basically, it's this wall that comes down over here, the old Snappy Jack's, the comedic store, and the Texas hot tub place or whatever. So now it's the park. So this is what we're basically talking about on the one profile there.
Yeah. Otherwise, it would just be blank panels?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it would be painted that warm gray color.
I like the upgrade.
It's our northern door.
Okay.
The Fox cover.
You're okay, Secretary?
On the Fox, I'm okay with, I don't care which one of those fence. Not the chain link, Text Dot fence, but one of the upgraded fencing. I think that. I think it's around 600 grand for the covers.
I particularly agree with that exhibit, the sea fence. Because it's going to be much harder for kids to throw things on freeway.
Mesh with the tubular steel.
Take the mesh out, and the kids are going to experiment with what they can toss off the bridge.
Is everybody okay with this one?
Not just kidding.
That's the mesh one?
Yeah, you could put a mesh on behind the other one.
It's mesh and tubular steel?
Just this is a little more decorative.
Meshes over the top part?
No, meshes.
No, meshes on bottom part. And then the tubular steel continues and then angles over, kind of like the existing fence does.
Right now, it's chain link, correct?
Yes, sir.
So they throw stuff through it right now, if they wanted to.
And they do.
That's fine. I'm fine with either one of those options.
I can see.
No top? No top?
No top.
Does that, either that mesh one or the other one is tubular steel?
No, I'm just saying, but didn't you say they arch over?
Yes.
Yeah, they do arch over. You can see here. They do kind of bend over.
Not all the way.
No, I'm just, but I think everybody's seeing, 600 grand for the cover is too much.
I agree.
I believe that's all we had.
Thank you.
And as Nika said, we will be bringing back the gateway package.
Appreciate the work. I know it's like herding cats.
Thank you.
It's looking great going over the lake now. It looks like it's, something's going on, yeah. Other than just all the, everything else.
A lot of drawing.
It's looking good though. So just one question. I keep getting this answered. I hear conflict reports. Are y'all on schedule?
Well, the project thing really brought this to the forefront, and we kind of threw, Nika, David, and Eric a curve, was we said we need decisions sooner rather than later, because we're running ahead of schedule.
The project is ahead of schedule. Do the entire project?
The project overall is about where it should be. But here in Lewisville and with this segment, 407, Garden Ridge, the lake, we're really doing fairly well.
Those beams are coming in, the ones you have to put in up around the lake, where are they coming from? Somewhere around San Antonio or something?
Wait, I can't.
Okay. I was behind them for about 75 miles. So you're not two months behind. Somebody told me they saw where y'all were two months behind schedule on the project.
That's probably one of our competitors.
That's like in the salt in the paper, so I don't know. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And for your next workshop, they will be back. We talked specifically about 407 and timing issues related to 407 coming down. So you'll have another 5:35 presentation at the next meeting.
We read, will I be right here, agenda? Adam C., it's public hearing.
This is a hearing on your service and assessment plan for Josie Lane Public Improvement. You called this hearing at your last meeting. You're finally getting close to some of the last few issues that you're going to have to deal with to establish the public improvement district for Josie Lane.
Adam one?
This is the resolution, again, related to Josie Lane Public Improvement District. It approves various documents that you have to have to operationalize this pit, including a construction and funding, acquisition agreement, reimbursement, and then administrative services agreement. We'll actually pay a third party to come in and administer this pit. It's very complicated. All paid for through the assessment.
That's actually Adam two, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. That's okay. Everybody's okay. One was just the minutes. Okay. Everybody okay with the minutes? Adam three?
This is design, a corporate driver doing something a little different here just because of issues that we want to focus on related to corporate. It's one of our last opportunities to have an impact with the design of a major roadway. And so this does include a design charrette in your cost figures, and so the charrette is really Phase One.
Adam three? Oh, excuse me, four, sorry.
Why are cities dropping out ahead of time if they're just getting?
Some cities, there is an issue that you can charge for people that are outside of your city, and it's just a balance. You have to really look at what is most cost-effective. I don't know why, I believe it was Lake Dallas is the latest one here that dropped out. I don't know the answer to why they did that, but sometimes it is because they would prefer to charge.
They figure they can make more from a charge than?
Yeah, that's just an analysis. And we've looked at that, and we don't think it would be a necessity.
Adam five? Adam six? Adam seven?
We do have representatives from Landry's here this evening. I did want Eric to talk a little bit about one change we have related to the 80% brick veneer requirement, or actually their drawings in relation to that requirement. Eric, do you want to?
We have Chris Cooper with Maze Architects and Jonathan Marine, representative of Landry's.
Thank you, sir.
Here with the two gentlemen are representatives of this project. This project did a relocation coming off of I-35, lived first to track, that sits right in front of the old garden inn at Lake Vista Drive and 121. I think you have that in your location match. What Cleve is passing out is about the 097th version of the elevation that we've had in the last few days. It represents a corporate look that Landry's is looking to do. This would be the first prototype in the Dallas Fort Worth Metroplex. They built this building in College Station, Cypress, and again, and Port Arg. There's this project that would be built in Waco, Odessa, and some other cities. It's in the backup. I can't recall them offhand in the future. This, we are the first one in the Dallas Fort Worth area. And they have done some rehab of some old cheddars and some around the state, but those are rehabbed. And they will try to merge to this look. What you have is a four elevation view. Their variance is to the 80% aggregate total brick veneer requirement, being that it's on a gateway located on 121. They're pitching a mix of brickstone, concrete basement units or a dock block or split-place block, mistucco with barn wood and other features, glass and some other features there in the breakout, so that's your memo. They're sitting right now at 40% aggregate total. You take away your openings, your windows, and do all the math, and it comes out there. They gave you a breakout. The elevations that you got in your last packet are correct. However, they did make an error on their front facial. The front of the store is a 45, much like it sits now, but it's a 45. So you do see the front elevation, or you do see the front entrance on at least two or three elevations, if you use the elevation rule. You'll see it. But in their overall caps, that was 46% was mailed out to you in your packets, is truly a 40. And they came in, they showed Cleve and I their error, and thanks to a close eye of one of the councilmen that I will not mention, but great eye, and it was not intended, I don't think, on these gentlemen's part, but that's what they're looking to do. They're strong on trying to maintain the signature. We've dealt with them from a site plan perspective. Everything else is in compliance. This is the remaining item. They are under construction with grading, and they are amenable to discuss adds if the council still wishes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank them for investing. I know with the 35 corridor, there's always a challenge with what we're dealing with there. I personally would like to see 50% hit. I know we had that number at 80%. I know in past, we have gone below that. But this is brand-new construction. It's not a rehab. It's not a refit. So for me, I'd like to see what we can do to at least keep a floor of that 50%.
They had discussed that specifically with Eric, and they think there is a wider reach than 50%.
Where have we gone below it in a?
So please going to pass out kind of a history of what's been done through councils in the past. We may have missed one or two, but this is a pretty good representation of what's gone on with exterior finish. The exterior finish requirement came in in July of 99. It was amended two, three, four times to add on building additions and definitions on basement veneer and other flexes. In about a year's time, you'll see that in there. Prior to that, there was a requirement for 70% brick for multifamily. Other than that, there wasn't necessarily a brick requirement. So you'll see some variances back in 93, and that was basically to the multifamily 70% brick requirement. There was a standalone ordinance that was pulled out, a zoning ordinance at that time, and the council did give that. So since 99, there's several new, what he gave you is all new construction. Some of it's our own, off the beaten path, but on future Valley Ridge or places like that. But some of the buildings that Syntex did, disset together, did the variances.
Says that Syntex was denied. Says that Syntex was denied.
So was the Crest order.
That's just giving us everything that was presented to the council?
Yes. Vista Ridge Office Park, there's two of those that I'm not to reference. Syntex, and I think Crest Manor was also denied after Bellamadera was approved three to two. So if we did include a couple that were denied, kind of front of Vista Ridge Office Park.
I got a question to the people here from the developer. You said they're pretty devoted, I guess the county's pretty devoted to this design?
I would say so.
What does that mean? They are, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not going to go to Plano or Frisco or Capel and build one that's different from this design?
I think we proved it in what we built before and what we're planning on in Waco and Odessa, that this is indeed what we're moving forward with.
So if you were to build another one with more brick content in the next 10 years, you wouldn't have a problem coming back and redoing this one to your new?
I wouldn't have a problem.
So you'll stipulate that?
I can.
Okay, so can we do that?
Make the variance contingent on that.
So within the next 10 years, if Sawgrass comes back and puts in a different design that has more brick to it, you'll come back and retrofit this to match that?
I think for a ground-up building, yeah. I mean, if it's a remodel, like cheddars or something like that, that may.
No, no, no. I'm saying this building here, once you build it.
Yes, sir.
If y'all come back to, like, Frisco or whatever, and put in a new one, and it's got more brick, new design, more brick, you'll come back and retrofit this building to match the new one you're building in Frisco?
Is that anywhere in your?
Does that make sense? I don't like getting into that. I mean, we could change our rules. Why did we change our rules to 30%? Well, the reason I'm saying that is because you look at, there's been some other establishments that have built one thing here in our city, and then they go to Plano, Frisco, Capel. They build a totally different look. And they don't like that color. And they say they can't do it because it's their company deal, but if they go to another city and they build whatever the city asks them to build. I wouldn't say that they always, they will do that just because they ask them to. They think they might make more money there. But to try to hang up somebody on that, that's not our business. That's not our business to put a stranglehold on them. It's not a stranglehold? Yeah, well, first of all, I doubt very seriously if nine years from now, they're going to come in and fix this. First of all, we're not going to look at it, because most of us won't be here then.
It's up for you. I got an over-under on you.
But I don't care, so I won't look at it, because I don't have a problem with going to 20% brick or 5%. But that's a whole nother issue about that. But, you know, we always have that deal. Well, Plano does this, and Frisco does that, and Prosper's going to do this, and Richardson does that. Well, Grand Prairie likes to have Hardy plank on the whole thing. You know, we're going to go to that?
Well, we've got this number of 80% that sits out there, and we either hold to it, which we have not.
Right. I mean, we knew that when it was done, that we weren't going to hold to it. But it was something to look for, and at the time, there were a lot of warehouses going in in this area that we were putting at the gateway, and that was one way to stop that. But, you know, we're not doing the warehouses on prime highway frontage right now.
No. However, if you go through their graphics, you'll look at the one that's down. However, you, if you go through their graphics, you'll look at the one that's down on, on, what's the, Gallaston, and it's very little stonework at all, if you look at their photos. So, you know, so they have in the portfolio currently product that doesn't match even, doesn't even come close to, at 80%. So my, my thought is, I'm with the 35. Me, I'd love to see the 80%. I really would. But my thought is with the 35 and, you know, with the variances that we have given, I'd be willing to meet them partway, and that to me is the, is the 50.
And they've already said they could go to that?
Yes.
My understanding, yes.
They're willing to do it. I'll say I'd go for the 52.
Oh, you want 52?
52 also.
Is there an easy way to tell me, looking at this picture, where that additional brick is going to go?
We would use stone in lieu of brick.
Okay, and where would it go?
I have a drawing after him, he says, and I had, said probably the easiest way to have a screen.
Stone in lieu of brick.
Everywhere red is with a number, stone.
You get brick. You can have brick.
It's brick or stone.
But they wanted to put it in the design. But if you're replacing with brick, you're not doing anything. You've already got, if you've got-
80% is brick or stone.
Right.
So they would be adding some stone, not additional brick.
So you're adding additional? I thought you said you were going to put stone instead of where you had brick.
Instead of the non-compliant materials.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Where would it go?
I understand it's going to go in these areas.
Generally, we would take this elevation right here and do all stone. We would stone the wainscot under here, stone this wainsco wall, and then add some brick behind this Texas to the bone sign, and just have them painted directly on the brick. And that would get us-
50%?
Just look at the red.
Those are rough numbers, so-
The Texas to the bone, would it still be the same Texas to the bone, green?
No, it'd be red, platinum over there.
It would be red brick.
Red brick, yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know, I'd still just like to have them do the, if they change the deal and upgrade it, move to another city that they come back and do this, because it's happened with, and I won't mention the names, but it's happened with several other chain businesses.
I understand your frustration, where they come here and they say, this is a corporate standard, and this is what we want to do, and we're not going to do it, we're not going to, we're not going to be here unless we can do it this way, and then-
They go next door and they do it that way.
They're doing it.
And we haven't ran into this issue previously in any other one where we've had 80%. So, and we have added brick to this particular elevation in hopes of doing that. If another jurisdiction requires 100% brick, you know, that we have to comply and they won't give us a variance, I mean, you know, that, that seems a little unfair to us to have to come back now because another jurisdiction required something more stringent, which I don't think would happen, because we haven't ran into that, except for here, but, you know, if we have to.
And what we're saying, what I'm saying is, if it came in and you did something that was 80% brick in one of the others, you come back and fix this one at 80% brick?
Yeah, I just, I don't see us ever doing 80% brick, so.
Which is why you'd be willing to do it.
Right.
But I don't see any reason not putting it in there. It's, I can tell you, another story that said that too, a lot, lot bigger, Walmart.
Eric, can I take you into closed session for a second?
Sure. Go into closed session. You remember that? Walmart?
City Council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation, which I will lead, and then we'll have the pledge both American Texas flags, led by Councilman Durham.
Most gracious God almighty, our creator, our maker, our redeemer, our lord and our savior, we thank you so much for the blessings you give us, and we take time to pause now to give you praise, honor, and glory for all that you've done with your creation, for all that you have given us. We ask that you help us tonight to be good stewards of your creation, that you give us wisdom and guidance, and that you give us compassion and heartfelt feeling for our fellow neighbors. We, as I said, at this time of year, we all remember those who are not experiencing the joy of this season. Give them your peace, give them your comfort, let them know your joy, so they might too enjoy the Christmas season. We ask a special blessing of those who fight day in and day out of their lives for freedom, truth, and justice here at home and abroad. And all, we ask all this in your most precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the construction of Old Town Park Plaza, we will now convene into closed session. Session. Item Six, public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for the Josie Lane Pub, excuse me, Public Improvement District. At the October 6, 2014 meeting, the council called for a public hearing to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the Public Improvement District, along with related information concerning the costs and indebtedness to be incurred. Recommendation, the council can conduct the public, public hearing. I'm having a problem here. I did not have any questions, any cards filled out for anybody to speak on this. Councilman Durham?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to close the public hearing, second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next item is visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these, at this meeting. I did have a card filled here by, looks like Joseph Lee.
Yes, sir.
Just come forward, and you may need to pull that microphone down a little bit, and just give us your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Joseph Lee. I live at 332 West Corporate Drive. I'm here in Lewisville, Texas. I've been here about, going on seven years. Giving honor to all of your council members here today, and you, Mr. Mayor, especially to Mr. Gilmore. What I wanted to speak about is that for the last seven years, I've taken a group of guys and I've brought them from a different walks of life. Some of them been in jail, some of them been high school students. What I'm mainly referring to is, we, as a Lewisville city, have a football team, and we need a home. We need a place where we can play football and entertain the city of Lewisville. I am in record with the Texas Indoor Gridiron League. I'm also hooked up with the indoor football league, the CIF, and the X League. We want to present not only the football team as a Lewisville Savage, but we also want the city to possibly back us, because we want to bring tourism to the city of Lewisville. These guys are very like-minded. They do want to represent the city of Lewisville. They do it every weekend, they're weekend warriors. We've already put in two scrimmages. Our first game is January 11 in Arlington, but we just want to let you know that we are here, and we do support the city of Lewisville, and we carry the name, Lewisville Savage, as an honor to the city of Lewisville of where we live at. We just need a home, so, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, sir. And somebody from staff will probably be getting in touch with you. Thank you, sir.
You've never seen indoor football, by the way. It's, it's a, it's a great show.
I used to have tickets. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request move of an idol, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. No one filled out a card or asked for anything to be removed. Councilman Tierney?
Moved to approve the consent.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve the consent agenda, second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven is a tabled item, consideration of a variance to Lewisville City Code, Chapter Six, Land Development Regulations, regarding waiving the required exterior finish requirements for Salt Grass Steakhouse located at 801 State Highway 121, as requested by Chris Cooper of Mays and Associate Architects, representing the owner, Landry's Restaurant, Inc. Salt Grass Steakhouse is chosen to relocate due to the expansion of I-35 and submitted a new engineering site plan along with architectural drawings. The new location meets all the city development codes except the exterior finish. This particular site is located on a brick veneer gateway, which requires an aggregate total of 80% brick veneer. Salt Grass Steakhouse is requesting a variance to provide an aggregate total of 46% of brick veneer in lieu of the 80% brick requirement. The proposed exterior finish is in alignment with the new corporate look of the Salt Grass Steakhouse restaurants. Recommendation, staff, as council approves variance is set forth in caption above. I do have a card filled out by Mr. Jonathan, Jonathan Green, who says, I do wish to speak and support that. Mr. Green, if you'd come forward, please, sir. Just name and address for the record, please, sir. Thank you.
Jonathan Green, 1510 West Loop South, Houston, Texas, 77027. I want to thank the council for taking the time to hear our request for a variance. Our Salt Grass location in Lewisville was open in 1996. It was our first Salt Grass in the Dallas Metroplex. And it was number six in the entire concept. As of now, we have 53 units all over Texas, Colorado, and a few in Louisiana. We're asking for a variance from the brick gateway, the brick veneer gateway, 80% to our, to our new prototype that you mentioned in your opening statement. As you know, we, you know, we're forced, we were forced to close or relocate. We chose to relocate to a location as close that we could get to our current location, which we felt was important. This location is, I would say, two blocks removed from I-35, so in a, in an already saturated restaurant zone, where there's seven, eight branded restaurants along 35. So our store is back from 35. It's, it's not in the most desirable location, but we feel it's going to be successful. And we're asking for this variance for, to maintain our, our, our look of our prototype for Salt Grass Steakhouse, and to maintain our, our Texas roots. These, these elements that we have in our building, the wood siding, the barn wood, even the brick and the stone, all speak to our Texas roots, and that's what we want to maintain. We don't want to, or we don't feel like, if we do all brick, 80% brick, which we did look into, and, and to be frank, the, the look of the building was just not our look. It wasn't, it wasn't what our brand is. It wasn't what our brand has done for the last 18 years in Lewisville. In addition to looking into if we could comply, we also added brick. So, you know, on top of the three restaurants that we've built that are this exact prototype, this one has more brick than all three of them, which is College Station, Port Arthur, Thank you. And, and this, and this is indeed our planned prototype as we move forward, as we march into Waco, as we march into Odessa, as we move into Victoria. This is our prototype that we're going to move forward with, and our proof is in what we've done, and our proof is in what we've submitted. We've submitted for permits in both Waco and Odessa, same building. Again, y'all have, we have put on more brick on this building in, in our attempt to make it look, you know, in our attempt to get as close to compliance as we could. And our, and our fear is that the, our building will become nondescript, and, and we have to stand out in the location we are to be successful. Thank you.
You might want to hold on there in case we have some questions here.
Yes, sir.
Start with you, Councilman Gilmore, just in case we have some questions, you might be able to answer.
Mayor, we have that 80% because it's, it's a standard that we want to, we want to hit, and I have residents who frequently talk to me about development standards and, and what we want to see here within the city of Lewisville. So I am very hesitant anytime somebody asks for variance, especially on new construction. If it is rehab or refurbishment of an existing facility that didn't meet the standard, I'm willing to meet a developer partway, because they're investing, and quite frankly, it's, it's getting us to where we want to be. On new construction, and I've, I've spent quite a bit of time harassing staff, so thank you guys for putting up with me over the last couple of weeks, because the numbers just weren't making sense when I was looking at the elevations. I couldn't get the numbers to square, and we found a couple of errors in the documentation, so thank you for working with us. With that being said, I'm, I'm willing to mitigate a bit with the 35 construction and the, the movement. You guys have been a good corporate partner here within Lewisville, so we really appreciate the history. So if, for me personally, if, I'd like to see at least 50% of the standard, being a 50%, no lower than that. Now, some of my colleagues may have a different opinion on that, but for me, if we can get this to a 50% number, which I think you said in the workshop, that you, you guys have a, a plan for making that happen, then, then I could support this. But those are all my comments, Mayor. I don't know if anybody else has any comments before we put a motion out there.
Did anybody have any questions, the afternoon, or anything that they'd like to ask or go over? Okay. Anybody else got any comments?
Mayor, just real quickly, I was on council when we originally approved the 80% brick for gate- percent brick for gateway. I think that was in ninety-nine. And just to clarify what the reasoning and the thought process was, on our gateways, we were running into a problem with, a lot of it was, and it's, it's part, a lot of it is just the image of the city. And we were running up against some metal warehouse buildings, some other stucco buildings, and it wasn't just quite reaching the standards of the city that we wanted, especially on our gateways. So, that's kind of the, the thought process behind, I think, the council at the time. And it served us well. I think we've had, the majority of the new development that's come in has met or exceeded that eighty percent. I am, and we have, we have issued some variances on it. I'm okay, I'm going to be okay with the fifty percent, but I just did want to clarify, that's kind of the intent of the eighty percent, to, to clean up and to, to give Lewisville the better image and the aesthetics that we've been looking at, that, in cleaning it up on our gateways. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And I'll just add too, you were talking about your prototype and, and the image that you're looking. Is there a reason that you could not accomplish that same thing, same look? And I'm giving this, about this map that you are, this drawings that you gave council. Could you not accomplish that same look by simply either changing the color of the brick, allowable brick things, or painting them those colors? For example, the, the little gold area there where you've got the Texas bone, could that not be accomplished with just painting the brick, that gold with the green and the red line, instead of putting wood up or something, or painting the brick to where it looks like wood? You know, you do a lot, a lot of people do a lot of things with the brick, but it would still have the brick exterior, but it would still accomplish the look that you're wanting people to see, wouldn't it?
I, I don't think so. But the, it's a textural thing when you get to that. And all these elements are for architectural relief. And then you're painting a brick, which is probably the least desirable thing you want to do on the outside of any building, because if it scratches, if it weather gets it, it's, it's just not going to hold up.
They would.
Right.
If it scratches or weather, you're going to paint it again.
Right.
So, okay. Okay. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I make a motion, let me see here, make sure I've got this the way I want it. Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
We'll make a motion to have a variance available for fifty percent exterior of brick veneer in lieu of the eighty percent requirement. Does that meet the required language, Liz? Liz Plaster? Thank you.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, second by Councilman Durham. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your work and your help. Thank you. Look forward to having your new restaurant in town here.
Landry's can build some more if they, if they need some more, you know, there's plenty of land out there we can work with.
Yeah, we don't have a, I shouldn't say we don't. Boy, I almost messed up there.
Maybe they have a new prototype they're working on.
No, no, no. I was going to say, it would be nice to have a, a really nice seafood restaurant, which I know Landry's does. That was what I was going to say. But thank you, sir. Okay, item eight is consideration of three variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section Six dash one-two-three-B, non-residential landscaping requirements, Section Six dash one-four-five, screening devices, and Section Six dash one-zero-three-C-two-B, access management policy for Bel Air Crossing, a new commercial building located on Lot 1A, Block A of the Country Ridge addition as requested by Brandon Cruz of Technology Building Group representing Pirvana, Fard, and Corstro Shamshiri, the property owners. And if I mispronounce those names, I sincerely apologize. The 1.071 acre property located at the intersection of Bel Air Boulevard and Southwest Parkway is locate, is owned local commercial and is planted as one lot. The developer has submitted an engineering site plan and intends to construct a new nine thousand six hundred square foot retail building. Three variances are allowed to allow a variable landscape strip along the Bel Air Boulevard fringe in lieu of the required ten-foot landscape strip. B, allow a variable height retaining wall topped with a four-foot tall tubular steel fence along the southern border of the development in lieu of the required live screening. And C, allow driveway spacing less than fifty feet. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan subject to the council approval of variances. Recommendation of staff is council approved the variances set forth in the caption above. I do have a card here by Mr. Brandon Cross. Hope I'm pronouncing that correct. He does not wish to speak, but he is here to answer any questions. Councilman Ferguson, we'll start with you, sir.
Yes, I'm willing to make a motion to approve all three requests. I think the, from an aesthetic point of view and from a functional point of view, I can understand why they've made these requests. They seem to work well in looking at the drawings, so I will make a motion to approve all three.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And thank you, sir, wherever you are. I'm not sure. Thank you very much. And I apologize again if I mispronounced the names. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Four, Article Two, Building Standards, Section One, Zero, Eight Point Two, Temporary Structures and Uses for Proposed Temporary On-Premise Modular Sales Office Associated with the Hills of Vista Ridge Subdivision Development Phase One Located at the Northeast Corner of Oak Bend and Vista Ridge Drive Mall, requested by the Pulte Group as presented by Kurt Millward, Development Manager. Pulte Group is currently constructing a single-family residential subdivision called the Hills of Vista Ridge located on the Northeast Corner of Oak Bend Drive and Vista Ridge Mall Drive. The applicant is requesting a variance to place a temporary sales office on their site for the purpose of pre-selling units for a period not to exceed one year. The city of Lewisville Building Code does not allow portable buildings to be placed in this city for purposes of sales offices of this type. Recommendation of council, approve the variance as requested provided the temporary sales office is removed when the model home is completed or after one year, whichever comes first. Councilman Vaughn, we'll start with you, sir. Did, did we want to, did we need to see the presentation?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay.
Unless there's questions.
Okay. Okay, we'll start with you, Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we, that we approve the variance as requested with the addition of the one year that it's to be removed within or when the model home is completed, whichever occurs first?
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion?
Mayor, I had a question. This one seems to pop up every once in a while as a variance. Is there a way, or would it make sense to create some sort of, in our ordinances, especially where it's residential, where it's this rule instead of the blanket no? Would that be something we could explore?
We could certainly explore that and bring something back for your consideration.
Be another workshop.
Yes, sir.
We hope we have a few more of these come up, too.
Yes, yes. Love, love to streamline that process. That's all I had, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten is consideration of variance to Lewisville City Code, Section Six dash five-four, waiving the required engineering site plan for the proposed Matito's Restaurant located at sixteen forty South Stemmons as requested by Jeff Franco representing Matito's Restaurants. The subject site has been vacant since May 2013 and is currently under contract to be remodeled as a Matito's Restaurant. The location originally was the Water Street Seafood Company and then converted to the Fox and Hand Restaurant in 2005. One of the provisions of the Lewisville City Code requires that legal non-conforming structures or properties be required to comply with current code if the use or operation of the structure or property becomes vacant for a period of twelve months or more. The owner is requesting to waive the required engineering site plan and provide an exterior finish that more closely represents Matito's corporate design. The site currently meets the city development standards for parking and landscaping. This proposal is a redevelopment project that improves the site by occupying the site and upgrading the exterior design of the building. Recommendation of council, approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Do have a speaker, a speaker card filled out by Jeffrey Franco and William Baker, who is representing Matito's Tex-Mex Restaurant. And they are not really wishing to speak, but are here to answer any questions that council might have. That'll start with Councilman Durham.
Nobody has anything else? I move to approve with the variances as the caption laid out.
Second.
Did you second? Did you second? Okay. Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we're glad to have you here as well. I've eaten at several of your other restaurants, and very good.
Thank you very much for having me here.
Well, thank you very much. Well, good. Good to have you. I think your original was down in Austin, is that correct?
Our original, yes. We're, we're offshoot of the original Matt's over in the ranch.
Original Matt's. And I'd also been the one that was over, it was, I, I think it's no longer there. It was called Matt's over by the theater, by the...
Over at Lakewood.
Lakewood, yeah.
Exactly.
But y'all have moved it now, is that correct?
It's over at the Skilman and Abrams.
Skilman and Abrams. Okay. It's a great place. Thank y'all for coming to town. Look forward to you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And I just had dinner at Matt's last week in Austin, so the original.
Item eleven is consideration of ordinance amending Lewisville City Code, Chapter Fifteen, Article Three, Specific Street Regulations Adding Section Fifteen dash six-two Pedestrian Crossing Restricted, prohibiting pedestrian crossings on Round Grove Road, FM thirty-fourty from fifty feet east of Old Orchard Lane to fifty feet west of Valley Parkway. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, councillor. I'm sorry, councillor. Need to read.
This is, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter Fifteen of the Lewisville City Code to add a new section fifteen dash sixty-two, Pedestrian Crossing Restricted, prohibiting pedestrian crossings on Round Grove Road from fifty feet east of Old Orchard Lane to fifty feet west of Valley Parkway, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, councillor. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration of ordinance amending Lewisville City Code, Section Fifteen dash one-two-six, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Prohibited, Parking, prohibiting parking on College Street from Mill Street to Valley Ridge Boulevard on both sides of College Street. The Denton County Transportation Authority has been awarded a grant through the Texas Department of Transportation to provide a pedestrian and bike path connecting the three train stations within the city. A portion of the planned path will consist of a dedicated bike lanes of College Street from Keeley Avenue to Valley Ridge Boulevard. To provide these bike lanes, parking must be prohibited on this section of College Street. The Transportation Board considered this item during the November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting and voted unanimously six oh to prohibit parking on College Street. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as written, second by Councilman Vaughn. Councillor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter Fifteen, Traffic and Vehicles, Section Fifteen dash one-two-six, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Prohibited on Specific Streets, prohibiting parking on College Street from Mill Street to Valley Ridge Boulevard on both sides of the street, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration of ordinance amending Lewisville City Code, Section Fifteen dash one, Definitions, and Sixteen, Fifteen dash two, Authority to Erect Stop Signs, authorizing city engineer or his designee to install traffic control signs and devices. This item will clarify the present code of ordinances by clearly authorizing the city engineer or his designee to deploy traffic control signs and devices in accordance with the state's Texas Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices in prevailing federal, state, and local laws and standard engineering practices. This item is considered administrative action and so was not presented for consideration to the Transportation Board. Recommendation of this from staffs, that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to present, move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham. Councillor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Section Fifteen dash one, Definitions, and Section Fifteen dash two, Authority to Erect Stop Signs, to authorize the city engineer or his designee to install traffic control signs or devices, creating a legal presumption for authorized installation, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item fourteen is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Lewisville accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the city, levying special assessment, assessment against certain property within the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter three-seven-two, Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, and providing for severability, providing an effective date. A public hearing has now been held related to the service and assessment plan for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District under Chapter seven, three-seven-two, Texas Local Government Code. The next required step is for the governing body to levy the special assessment against taxable product, properties within the district. The proposed ordinance accepts and levies the special assessment. Recommendation of staffs, that council approve the ordinance as set forth in caption above. I do have a card here that does not wish to speak. And I'm sorry.
Prabha.
I'm sorry?
Prabha.
I can't read that. Is it Prabha in the last name? Is that Sinclair?
Yes.
Prabhan Sinclair, apologizing again, is here and is, does not wish to speak, but is in support of this item. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Vaughn, second by Councilman Ferguson. Councillor?
This is an ordinance of the city of Lewisville, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the city, levying special assessments against certain property within the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter three-seven-two, Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Consideration of dates, location of the annual city council retreat, and setting a special city council workshop on January twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. With a pass, with passage of Division twenty-twenty-five Plan and Expansion of I-35, a number of issues are requiring city council review and discussion. A special workshop is requested for Saturday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. The workshop is proposed to begin at eight-thirty a.m. and is planned to be held in the city council conference room. At this point, staff believes the meeting could conclude as early as one p.m. In addition, when the Blue Ribbon Capital Planning Committee was appointed, a schedule was provided that showed a recommendation that city council retreat be held March nineteenth through the twenty-first. These dates allow time for the committee to develop recommendations for the bond program so that they can then be considered by the city council at the two thousand fifteen retreat. The Lewisville Hilton Garden Inn is available on these dates. The Worthington Renaissance Hotel in Fort Worth is also available for these dates. Recommendation is that council confirm the nineteenth through twenty-first as the council retreat dates, review the locations, and set the twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth as a special called city council meeting date. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, I would like for us to go back to the way we used to do these in, in, trying to think when we started doing these. It was before I came on council twenty years ago. But retreat was held, it's a long time ago. I forgot most of it. But we used to have retreats at a hotel in the metro area, but it was a little bit of a way. And we've got, that's all we did for three, two to three days, something like that. that. And I think we did get a lot of stuff accomplished. The first few years, I drove back and forth because I thought it was a stupid idea to go outside of the town. We got a perfectly good meeting room here. It does make a difference to get away and work on things. So I would like to see us go, I don't, I'm not tied to the Worthington, but we've had it there before and it works, so I would like to see us do that again.
Is that a motion?
I would make that in the form of a motion, to have at those dates, both dates, and the, that the retreat be held at the Worthington Renaissance Hotel in Fort Worth.
Second.
And I, and we have a motion and a second, and I will agree with you councillor. I do think it adds a lot to the teamwork and the effort of the council to get away from the normal life that you have outside of this sometimes, and come together as a team and work on it to do the things. In fact, I don't know, and I know Donna was there, a couple of y'all were there, but that was the way I think this city hall got built and the visionary that we had then to come to the Old Town area to help that, put a revitalization in the Old Town area and stuff. And I don't know that would have happened unless you had that opportunity to really come together and kind of mold and build on that relationship. So I agree with you at that point. So with that, if anybody else have any, we have a motion, a second, anybody else have any discussion?
I'm a two minds about this. I think both create some opportunities. I think the opportunities for residents, even though they don't necessarily take us up on it by having it here local, is a huge, on the other side of it. So I'm not going to vote against this. I think mixing it up is a good thing, but I would, I would like to make sure that staff understands from my perspective, I think both need to be in the mix from, from year to year.
Well, and I, in response to that, I would like to say to all the residents in the audience tonight, last year I had a retreat that we held...
Right, yep, right here.
In Lewisville, and it was a pretty big one because we were recovery, you know, going over the Vision 2025 Plan, short of the people that were involved in the process for the 2025 Plan, I believe we had one resident.
I'd agree.
And it's sad, I wish it wasn't that way, but that's just the way it is, and it's the way it always has been, so.
I'd still like to give the opportunity. Maybe I'm a glass half-full guy.
And when we are at these places, they are open meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'll tweet them and live blog and all that other nonsense that I do, so.
Any other discussion?
No comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that gets us down to reports, Nika.
Here, we, I just placed the new economic development brochure and community profile in your boxes. Mayor, this is your copy that I placed in your box. This showcases Lewisville advantages for new business, for coming to Lewisville to work, live, play, and visit. And we have it in also digital format. If council would like to have more copies, we'll certainly be happy to provide it. And this is the packet that goes out with all of our recruitments for new businesses coming to town.
Okay, thank you, sounds good. I liked the one you had last time, it was really good. Houston. Bob?
Chief?
Looked like an excellent new piece of equipment that you purchased out there, and I hope we never have to use it, but I'm sure someday it probably will, and it's good that you have it available to their citizens.
I want to tell mayor, council, and city administration, thank you for obviously keeping us in great equipment to do our job. The guys are very excited about it and can't wait to get it in service, and the plans are to hopefully have it in service end of this week or first of next week at the latest, so we're looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Linda? Chief? Good to see you here tonight, sir. No report? Okay. Carol, how are you doing tonight, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. Just thought I'd give you a quick update that we are on our creek cleaning and right of way and drainage area cleanup, that we've pretty much finished the area in between Valley Parkway, I'm sorry, Old Orchard and Valley Parkway, Long Timber Creek, and we're going to jump over on the other side. But if you get a chance to drive out there, take a look, it's really looking nice. And 99% of the folks that we, we interact with are just, are thrilled about it and glad that we're finally doing that and that we didn't, didn't do it sooner, so.
Right.
So far, it's been a good reception.
Right, and I agree with you on that. There were a few people that were concerned that we were going to disturb the natural look and everything, and everybody's come back and said, no, you haven't, it really looks great, it's just nice and clean now. And it does invite you to actually take advantage of it and look good, so we appreciate all that. I'm sorry?
Extend the green?
Yes, extend the green, that's exactly right. And everybody can say, you can't say that the mayor gets priority because you hadn't started on my end of town, you started way on the other end of town. I was going to say, it's because it went for tenure. It went for tenure. Yeah, there was a lot of good confidence, but it went for tenure. Gina? Good to see you tonight, ma'am. Brenda? Nothing? Mr. Ferris? Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Safe and healthy holiday season.
Mr. Tierney?
Merry Christmas, and in the words of former attorney Ron Neiman, happy Festivus.
For the rest of...
For the rest of us.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I had the opportunity to visit with the Greater Lewisville Association of Realtors, and Ms. Renneke came with me, and she brought that wonderful economic development packet. It was a, is a great tool. We had an opportunity to engage the realtor community here, and they were asking about ways that they could get involved and ways that they could help, and they ended up giving me three or four interesting ideas that I think we may be able to engage those folks and help create stronger neighborhoods, which, you know, helps their business as well. So really was grateful for staff to help me out on that one and make sure that I didn't put my foot in my mouth, so it was a great thing. I did have one other comment to make because it is that Christmas time of year, our, animal shelter is always needing folks for adoptions, and if you're thinking about getting a pet or a new family member for the holidays, please consider going to the shelter. I don't feel like I'm dressed if I don't have dog hair on my clothes anymore, so, and our shelter dog has been a wonderful addition to our lives. So if you are interested, you can hop onto petfinder.com and just look up the Lewisville shelter, and there are going to be some great animals down there. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you all, and good luck out there.
Ms. Maran?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Have several things for the MCL Grand coming up. Impulse Dance Project is putting on a performance called Snow with two shows, one on the 20th, December 20th, one December 21st. We have the three redneck tenors for a New Year's Eve bash on the 31st benefiting the O-Look Performance Arts Center, and then they're going to come back on January 2nd and January 3rd and do a show on each of those days, so three opportunities to see the redneck tenors, and those additional shows are presented by the MCL Grand. Jeff Caldwell in the grand, grand stand-up comedy series will be performing on January 9th. And we began our Texas Tunes series again with the 2015 season kickoff on January 17th with somebody I'm particularly familiar with, Ruthie Foster, and I can tell you that Ruthie Foster puts on a heck of a show. She's an incredibly talented gal, come see her. I've seen the proposed lineup for Texas Tunes this year. One exciting thing for me, and I can't go too far into names, but I'm going to get, last year I got to see an old friend, this year I get to see another old friend, so that's kind of exciting. But the lineup is spectacular, so looking forward to Texas Tunes in 2015. Always have the Visual Arts League Acoustic Jam on Friday nights, and in the art gallery, we continue the I'll Be Coming Home Memories of World War II exhibit, including Eric Ferris' tank. No, I guess that's just a Jeep, isn't it? Sorry. No, it's Eric Ferris' Jeep, which has attracted a lot of attention, and everybody wants to sit on it, and so we had to put signs up, you can't do that. And Toyland on the north corridor hallway. One more item is the, I want to thank the fire department, they've made Christmas once again very special for a whole lot of kids and a lot of parents and a lot of grownups that are just kids at heart with the Santa coming by on the fire truck. It's, we see people taking videos and posting comments on Facebook about, you know, Santa came by and how excited they are. I did have to watch you drive by my street again, y'all never come down my street, always breaks my heart, but, but I saw you go down Valley Parkway and I waved, I waved, so. But next year you can put mine on your list. But anyway, I want to thank you for, for all the hard work that y'all put into that because I know it's, it's an effort and it means a lot to people. I think it's just one of those things that sets Lewisville apart from so many other cities with the special things that we do, so, thank you, sir.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Councillor? Julie?
Yes, sir.
Officer, once again, thank you for being here and for what you do each and every day, sir, appreciate that. And I do also want to wish everyone a wonderful Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and just a wonderful Happy New Year, prosperous New Year. And as my dad taught me, always told me, he says, you know, son, it never cost you anything, say please, thank you, and pay somebody a compliment. Sometimes they don't believe you, but it brings a smile to your face, it doesn't cost you anything. Hope you have a Merry Christmas. With that, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development Liberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and with those, we'll adjourn into closed session. We'll convene back into regular session. Any other action to be taken, council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]